Great. Borimer. Corcoran. Ames.
I'd like to invite you to stand for the pleasure of the meeting.
Pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. We have motion to approve presented. Mrs. Ames has made the motion. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Gray. Roll call on the motion to approve.
Trechell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Borimer, yes. Corcoran.
Yes.
Ames.
Yep. So they will stand as presented, which takes us to reports of committees. And if I may say, before you raise your hands and before I forget to mention, Mr. Trechell, as a private citizen, I would like to thank you for 22 years of service on this.
Thank you.
Would you like to start us off?
Yes, since I'm the finance chair, and we're going to vote for the budget tonight. Father Raffini had to print out a couple of items, and he'll be back here shortly, and I would like to do that at that time. And the utilities committee thinks that nature should be able to get started.
All right. Okay. The utilities committee has three items on tonight's agenda. Item number two is the first reading to approve the planning commission action of the final plat approval of the Slate Creek Code subdivision Block C. The Chillicothe Planning Commission on December 2nd approved the final plat, and now the city of Chillicothe needs to accept the public rights of lay-in easements associated with the subdivision. This emergency language has been added because the plat is required to be signed and filed with Ross County Superior Courts before construction can begin. The contractor is waiting on this passage so he can proceed. There is no cost to the city. This property just happens to be within the three-mile zone around the city, not actually within the side of the city. At the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three read rule and pass this one tonight. Item number three is the first reading amending the zoning code as it pertains to homeless shelters. This ordinance will add the definition of a homeless shelter and zoning. A review session will be held to explain the changes in detail in January. This legislation will go all three reads. The final item is item number four. It's the first reading granting a right-of-way easement to Ohio Power for electrical upgrades at Mary Lou Patton Park. This is a 30-foot ride by 425-foot long easement of property in Mary Lou Patton Park that will serve the American Legion Ball Diamonds. The easement will allow for major lighting upgrades, and these lighting upgrades will allow night baseball games to be played. At the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three read rule so that the upgrades can be implemented as soon as possible. As most of you are aware, my concern with Mary Lou Patton Park is the water they use, and they get it at no charge. I would like to take this opportunity to ask our new administration to look into this situation and develop a solution. And I've already been told by the mayor like that will happen. And one last thing, the Utilities Transit Committee has one assignment that needs carried over into the new year, and it's the creation of the Stormwater Utility. All other assignments have been run through committee, and they've either resulted in legislation or taken out of committee. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Mr. Trechell.
Thank you very much. This time, we are about to vote on our budget. And we're doing this because of the fact that we have payroll to meet this year. But funds are coming out of 2016, and it's a reason why we have to have this tonight. It will also be done, I believe, on the first meeting of the new council. So it will be a vote also. John Duck, correct?
I believe to reconsider it has to wait until the first regular meeting.
Okay.
Well, it's going to be two votes, actually, in order to do this, but we have to pay our people. And we had a meeting tonight to discuss finance, the budget, and hopefully everybody is satisfied with that report. And at the proper time, Mr. Feeny will report on that also. And also, during my report, I will motion waive the three read rule so we can pass that time. That concludes my report.
Mr. Patrick.
At this time, I'd like to make motion to go into executive session to be updated on any legal litigation.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Gray. Roll call on the motion to move to executive session.
Trechell, yes. Hatton, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Borimer, yes. Corcoran.
Yes.
Ames.
Yep. Motion carries.
Please invite our new vice chairman.
I... I... Mom called. The scene in funerals, 10 o'clock the first, and 11:00 tomorrow. I don't know where it went.
Thank you.
Oh. Yes. All right. She already said.
I think what the...
I tell you, he was parked there. You know, like, oh, we met. Oh, I just got this for his day. I already know. These shops are vacation stores. Now, the grocery store's missing. Oh, yeah. You need a run like this.
No, no, no. It's not going to be in 38. No, it's not.
You have to. It's all you got.
Family proms, wish we did proms.
I tell you, well, you could go.
Don't get you started. Now, when the other contractor here is a candy center.
Yes. You know, guns and stuff. Long. They had a new store there.
Then all of a sudden, we sign our...
Yes. And they had the pharmacy at the bank. All they wanted.
Shoveling it.
Anyway, one of the wives decided to build this up. And on the way to King St. Simon's, I'm driving, driving. Before you get to that, before you get ready, the city kicks in. It's all that. And so, yes, because they've got the gas supply. And I want to tell you what. I always have a list of everything that I want. And I had, yeah, two. So out of there.
Well, there's, I don't think they have all the...
I said, oh, John, we have things. They're taking some things, and I said, I said, let's go in. Let's bring the bread and the bag. He said, I'm so many, you know, $83.
Some of them will be worth saving another. It sounds like it will fall pretty much.
One of the closest parking places here.
They call them their great big...
They're not going to do that walk down the street.
But they've got a lot of them.
I should have done this one.
Frozen days. Yeah, anything that you want in their store, they got. And they got a big... Jump up, freeze.
Yeah, I agree. All I know is talk about, they have a talk about.
There's always a thing.
Can't you park over on Yount Hand Gym? I don't understand that.
Would that be part of the workout? Walking, just walking.
He gets the points if he drives.
Well, yeah. See, when my husband walks the bike, he walks to the bike.
I mean, you know, chicken.
Well, that's all. All right, my bike is like from Applewood, all right. The road falls, you get the bike path, go right out one way, come back, come right back to the track.
But I just want to make those two last few about parking over there. I'm not thinking about it. I am, and I think you saw it. I don't know. No, it's somewhere close there. Unless you live on the corner.
I think it's close to somewhere, isn't it? Is it like part of that building or next to it or something?
Yeah, somewhere there.
I think it's right in there. I don't think that works that I know.
Yeah. It's a social process. Crazy people. My best friend had to go have various...
I would contain that to me.
Yeah. And well, he's only got five. This is kind of exciting. And they thought it was wonderful. You know, carry, you know, three tires over the Holy Eucharist. You're an idiot to do that. But I collect his shoulder.
No, 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 they don't. I tell you what. I didn't care, but then I had a little bit. They had a little bit. Anything at all. Oh, it's, it's fun, guys. Of course, they never say the same. But they do. Like I said, I, I had it simple, but...
I think this one is the same point.
But, you know, I fired on the mess.
I know, we two, but you can't check it.
And that's good.
I think that maybe...
And I can't do what? I'm hoping.
Because Ross did, there was one, I think, Ross did, and there was the same group that was on the right. And then there's another one down, ran a couple of weeks ago down there.
I saw a lot of cars down there.
I know, but, 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 but,[553.34]
Yeah.
He put in on it there and that's illegal, he wasn't allowed to do that.
I am.
But it was a little contentious in there.
I can see both sides of this very dumb hat. I'm glad I didn't have to.
To me, it's just very simple. We have zoning rules and codes and regulations. You know, there was a lot of time spent on that. It came through here, went through council, enforcement, go by it. And then, you know, no one should be surprised.
There's the guy.
Yeah, there's no big green book.
A big green book written right in front of my nose.
I use it as a doorstop.
It'll work.
I went and pestered Mount Allen one day and he said, when's your take this and he'll come back.
How's our little nephew?
He's on his way home from Chicago. He talked to Dave Tanner on the phone coming home, said it was really bad.
Oh, for goodness sake.
I don't know.
Football game's gonna start in a few minutes.
Who's playing? The Bengals. Oh, who are they playing today? Broncos. I used to be a Browns fan, but my heart couldn't take it anymore.
Well, I was surprised that they gave the article in the game.
Pull a little crotch?
Yes.
Hopefully.
They still left you room for a trip.
Yeah.
They're still playing room for a trip.
Well, and the fact is, it's a trip. But, you know, when you go to Texas A&amp;M and you're young.
Sean, he was out in Colorado. Everything had closed up, I mean, stopped.
Bruce and all the new people went into the meeting.
Stayed two days, three nights. And didn't go up there, but let me tell you, they got the football team out. They didn't believe them. Slow mobiles going, they worked like dogs getting that team out. And there was another thing which went through this. I must say, confident. He got out too.
I just hope he's got sense enough to get caught.
But there wasn't anybody like that to do it.
That's right. He's best qualified.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I love that. I love that.
Is that speaking to a point?
Sure.
I think it's pretty hard. I just.
I feel like I'm getting to play some.
I didn't take any advice. I don't know. I don't know. Been a lot of, you know, everybody's said, a lot of people coming at home, so I don't know. That makes you feel bad.
He said, yes, if you had talked with her once, then it's all talk.
Now, that was one of the bad mistakes.
You were a center.
Oh, I know. This is scary. It's absolutely scary. What's it since scary, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
And every time I get down through there and I see them three thousand dollar landing lights in the palm hours. Because he said, I'll look at our money back.
No, those aren't landing lights anymore.
Those are landing lights, John. Those stocks don't come in.
No, those aren't tight lights because they're parked at the side of the house. I'll see you through the night.
Going down to there. I wish to swear that I declare the foul. Think that's a friend.
I've never seen that before on TV.
But you can see the beast from the light from the.
How are you?
Oh, for heaven's sake, I didn't recognize you. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Well.
He's all cleaned up. He's all cleaned up.
I think that's probably it. I've never seen him cleaned up.
Probably exactly what it is.
What do you think Grand Park that was, didn't we have lights in the park lane once before? Or that was fountains, right?
Fountains.
Fountains.
I wasn't even happy, but they did. Comstock.
You put fountains in?
He did.
Yeah. No, but nobody else put lights in before then?
In the water?
Mm-hmm.
I think they did have, they tried out lights on the fountains.
Oh, now, these lights are supposed to keep the dog from the geese away.
Wouldn't know what they have in there. That's what they have now.
That's what's in there now. And it's supposed to be, if it didn't work, he could get his money back. Lights never work, I said, unless you were looking for landing lights.
Right, that's what I said, too. What else do they with their geese?
I sold them to the Chinese restaurants. I don't know.
They just absolutely disappeared. I mean, you couldn't move down there for them. Or if one of them, Shrimine Lakes, they were everywhere. I mean, you couldn't walk, you couldn't do anything. And all of a sudden, they all disappeared.
I say there should be a Saturday day special. All the Chinese restaurants come in, whatever you can catch, good. Have a special the next day.
I got cats all over the place.
But all my thoughts are the mouse and then. It was last summer, there's this lady that goes down there and comes and she's one. And I was down there eating my lunch one day, she was pecking on the car window. She, I don't know how she found, well, I know she went over and talked to Dave Tanner. Dave Tanner gave her my address and my phone number and everything. She shows up at my front door in tears. I can't find those spots. Where are they? I don't know. I don't think they bust.
You know, they're gonna be as big a nuisance as the geese.
Oh, they're mean. They're mean. And people take their kids and take them from home with them. There's always.
Those geese down there, they're angry geese. I'm a plain sunny, I'm saying. They'd be somebody's one way. Oh, I mean, they literally chase her.
Well, it's a mess. It is an absolute, what, just looking at her something tells you it's taking her algae and she. We had a fortune. If they ever can make anything in a duct tape, we've made it.
Don't rush off. It's just good company.
We'll go watch football. Keep our blood pressure low.
His hat's still up there. Should've told him. Last time he marched out, he got really upset. Well, you would've loved it the day that when he got Eversen down the bottom stairs. I never, I could find, I pay him, I might get that bit back.
And he's not wrong all the time.
No, he's not. Sometimes he gets right. And then, there's something about the guy that was mowing the grass. That had always lived grass. And they paid him, I would actually, they paid eight hundred dollars an hour or something. And the guy wanted fifty cent an hour raise. And Eversen, what are you getting? And he got Eversen out there in the corner. He says, I'll pay that extra fifty cent an hour. And started pulling my out of his pocket. So when that runs out, I'll give you more. All he's just been really upset.
But you know the way things break, boy, does not make anybody upset.
You have to just shift into another gear. And, I mean, I could just see his way look at Jack. I had him stand up front and telling me the lie. I asked him, so what are you gonna do about this thing on, you know, Mill Street Design, about things coming up? That is nothing for that. That is nothing. He comes back in, sits right where Tom sits, and I'm sitting right where you are. Voted for it the next day, less than twenty-four hours. He walked out and said, do you understand what truth is and what honesty means when it's grand?
Did you read the paper? How were all of these accounts?
Oh, I read that. I read that. Couldn't resist.
Like I say, he just talked us one thing.
You won't be around here.
I don't know if you got someplace to go.
I don't really want to, you know, I've seen him do things that, that he has put the city in jeopardy. And he's put council personally, each person in jeopardy. Especially when he told those big lies about, not this thing that Tanner did with the stuff in the park, but when he sold the front end logo. And he lied, committed a lie, and he lied to the law director and had him pull that up and lied to the council. They all, they all, who they charged him out, he is in office. Every last one of them. Oh, yeah. I mean, we lost, as I was sitting there looking at that and thinking, and checking, like, you know, the farm equipment and stuff. We lost about fifty thousand dollars. Yeah. Because there's a good reason why I'm like, I think that stuff up there. We got some tools here.
That's a legitimate appraisal. I'll pay you check. I'll take it all.
I mean, I've had dealings with him. So, I mean, you know, I've had his old farm equipment and finished out of state. I mean, I know what that guy can do.
I mean, he has doctor signs in his eyes.
And he had it sold when you followed the page, friend. He had it sold the next day.
Well, before.
Yeah, he had it sold before. He picked it up and it was out of his possession the next day.
And I don't understand that part of it. They said you sell something, you order something, you gotta do something about it.
Well, and then we stood down there, ten years back then. And that was the whole reason why we couldn't bring it back. Just because that building was falling down. You'll notice it's still standing. And I looked right at him and I said, is all this stuff still left on one fifty nine? Oh, yes. Yes, that's where I had seen it right then. And been gone for months by then. Oh, yeah, we really got mad on that.
What's Bob Lettering, that cold pedal?
Oh, there's a choice with two. Teller conny.
I liked that.
Well, they, they've got a photography place in there.
In where?
In that house.
Oh, the little bitty house. Oh, okay.
Well, you know, he wanted to give it to the city.
Yeah, that's a part I said.
He wanted to give it to the city, and the city was going to maintain it and do everything, you know. And then he wanted to rename the main drag in the park, litter way. And so this was several months ago. And I said, you crazy? I said, do you really think people in Chillicothe are gonna be thrilled to have to maintain something where you can keep your beer sign up? And so then they decided they weren't gonna do that. So now, they have a conditional use to do photography there. But I think what needs to happen is the park park needs to get out, put one of those red X's on the colored. Because if it catches on fire, you can't, I mean, you can't risk any lives trying to save it.
You shouldn't be there anyhow, because it's the risk.
Can't catch on fire.
Huh?
It can't catch on fire.
It can't catch on fire?
Oh, yes, it can.
No, it's steel. It's all steel.
Those tides are wood.
Oh, yeah.
Railroad ties?
Yes, they are.
Oh, yeah.
They sure are. When they're gone, the rest of it's gone.
There's nothing to hold back your steel. You know, because they put that on wood. Right, right?
I don't know. You talking about the trestle?
Yeah, the tip.
Yeah, you know, where that comes out, if you have railway tracks, you've got to.
Yeah, but the tracks are on the top of it, is what he said.
Well, when they're gone, where's the rails gone?
Well, the rails are set up on top of that. They're gonna be held up by that steel. There are seven benign tides. I know what they are. But that's just, that's just the top portion. I don't.
I don't think anybody's doing anything.
Well, I don't know. I've seen too many UV fusing stuck in tide and started to bar.
Yeah.
I didn't work on a rail for twenty-five years. Well, I'm not saying this week, but.
I don't know. I'm just not sure if he didn't take it over to maintain. But then keep up their sign and that's.
She's, um, she's living in sort of.
I had a little one that really.
I remember.
They've got a perp up there.
You really think it's her who's saying that or is it him?
Uh, no, I think that's the son trying to unload stuff. He's not altogether anymore, obviously. I said it once a lot, because they're married to somebody that our family, we get together and I see them there once.
Well, that's the way it was with the family.
Yeah.
I could stand in the distance. If I may, yes, I could copy their.
No, thank you, Tony. They can have the whole league thing done, and they're fine now. It has to be the union, because that's the guy that.
About Saint Cloud, I think they actually moved wish to the bank.
When they had to agree the union.
About Saint Cloud.
Because she was actually moving that version with them, but she didn't have a job.
Right. And they already had settled everything about more, so.
But I mean, he sure pitched the prototype.
The only lawsuit that I know is coming from Kevin Ross.
It's good.
She, yeah, yeah, because now she's kind of.
And the ex-guy Warren.
She's learning.
He has a couple of seats against the city that hop those cars. Oh, he's out. He's out. His office is out.
I know where John's at.
Is there a motion to return, Mr. Packard? What's your motion to return from the second by Mr. Neal? Roll call on the motion?
Gotcha, yes. Pat, yes. Paul, yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Grayman?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yep. It's a suspension regular session. Are there additional committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move to reports and officials. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President Illinois. I just have a couple of things to include in my report. First one is a proclamation I'd like to issue. And it reads, Chillicothe City Council members take note to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and to faithfully perform all the obligations and duties incumbent upon them in the position of city councilperson. Position of city council president is an honor to bifurcate local government, whereby Tammy Elornardo has served in the position of city council president for the past year after being appointed to fill a vacancy. She also serves as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, soon to be president, and chair first of the design review board. Nancy Ames has demonstrated dedication to her constituents through her commitment to many various committees that she has served on over the eight years she's been the second ward city council representative. She's had special involvement in economic and downtown development while also serving as a member of the Chamber of Commerce and being on several local boards. Tom Trussell has served over twenty years as the city's first ward city council representative, making him the longest running councilperson to have ever served in Chillicothe City Council to date. During Tom's tenure on city council, spent much of his time as chairman of the Department of Recreation Committee, Finance Committee, and performed the duties of council president pro town. The importance of public servants and hard work and effort they provide is all too often forgotten or doesn't receive the recognition due to those whose services have been both honorable and commendable. Therefore, I, Jackie Everson, Mayor of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Monday, December twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, as Tammy Elornardo, Nancy Ames, Tom Trussell, City, Chillicothe City Council Representative Day in Chillicothe, and urge everyone to join me in extending our appreciation and gratitude to Tammy, Nancy, and Tom for their outstanding contributions, dedicated service, years of commitment, and professionalism in service to the citizens of Chillicothe and this community. And second, I admit, the recipe of the name. I appreciate your service as well. And I've really enjoyed the last four years in working with you and serving this community. Times we haven't always agreed, but it's always been professional and respectful, and I so appreciate it. I wish you the best of luck as a city council, and I wish the best of luck to Mayor Feeny and his and every student. Thank you very much. Next, please, your report.
Thank you, Mayor Everson. Mayor Lex Feeny, would you like to give your last auditor's report?
Thank you, Mayor President. Afraid I won't be able to talk to Mayor Everson's report. I will comment on the business tonight, though. We have a budget to vote on. We had a brief finance review session prior to this meeting. This will be the second meeting of the budget with amendments since the previous. We went into some detail in that previous meeting, but if anybody has any questions that did not come up during that meeting, I'm happy to answer them now. But I appreciate everybody's hard work. There's some department heads here, all the input, the mayor's input. Over the past three years that I've been here, the budget has seen many variations and has been an interesting process and learning process for me, and I've enjoyed it. It is up for second read tonight and needs to pass tonight, so I would encourage the waiver of three read rule. Had it not been for Councilman Trussell's savvy, we wouldn't have been being paid this Friday, the first. So his parting gift to the city is paychecks for everyone, so. Very appreciative. Other than that, I'll briefly comment as well. I've enjoyed working with both Councilman Trussell, Councilwoman Ames, President Elornardo, and Mayor Everson. And like I said, it's been a learning experience for me. Incredible group of people who, your passion and commitment to the city is really admirable. Thank you all. Back, please, my report.
Thank you, Mr. Feeny. Mr. Rutherford is out of the room. So I think we will move to audience participation. Is there anyone who would like to address council this evening?
I would.
Please come forward. Give us your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Brad Kuzenza. I live at six forty-four Allen Avenue. And I'm here to do pretty much what everyone else has done tonight so far, and that's to thank the council folks that have served on council. And some of you changed seats and some of you move on to other seats. But in particular, I came to talk about Mr. Trussell, really. In the fifteen-plus years I served in city government, most of that is the Parks and Recreation Director for the city. Tom was the liaison between the council and the Parks and Rec Board. And served on the board for, what, Tom, fifteen years, probably? And I think during that time, we all saw some great improvements in our park system. Not just in Yachtangia, but the park system as a whole. And I want to, I really want to just compliment Tom on his support and his leadership through that time. Great things happened, and they happened because Tom helped a great deal. Without his leadership and being able to talk to us about how council works and making sure that things were brought to council on time and to make sure the funding was there, those things wouldn't have happened. So I just want to thank everyone for their hard work in our community, but especially Tom. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to old business. Anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss? All right. Petitions and correspondence, Mr. Fawson?
President, I have nothing to report.
All right. Brings us to new business.
I would like to say, first of all, thank you to everybody on city council. This city council and the previous city councils that I've worked with enjoyed very much. It has been a great experience, learning experience. I have thoroughly enjoyed meeting different department heads, people in the city, working with the committees. And I'm gonna miss it, but I am very proud to be having David Clay to take my place. And I'd like to have David come up at this time to give you your ring. This, by the way, is the city ordinances. And it's the Bible for city council. Anytime you have a question, you look in here. It's also online, but there's something about just looking at it in person that really, really helps you out. And I want to say congratulations and best of luck to you.
You know, I have very short vocabulary, but I know one thing. This lady right here canceled a whole lot of the phone calls I got. Luckily, I said also, in my place of business, there's a steady flow of folks that I know that live in my ward and throughout the city of Chillicothe, I've seen it. Does your hard good to be able to help these folks as they come through. Uh, Jack, thank you very much for being mayor, and you took a lot of hits this year. You did not deserve. And, but I think you did a fantastic job. We got the Carlyle Building up. Four years ago, who'd have thought that Carlyle Building would be going? Who is now. Thank you very much for that. And Nancy Ames, her development abilities are tremendous. She just did things that she never expected to happen. It just happened. She made it happen. You did a good job. Tammy, thank you for being telling the president. That's a tough job. But you added finesse to the job. I kind of tore it up a little bit. You did a heckuva job. You really smoothed that out and made it work well. And there's one person here who's been here longer than me, John Fawson. If anybody wants to know anything, you ask John, and he'll come up with the answer himself, or he'll find out. He's tremendous and an awesome guy. With that, folks, Josh, I'm up here. I have an ordinance book for you. Nancy and I decided to do this tonight because I know some council members have waited months to get their book. My guy, I'm gonna make sure you get this baby before you start. Good luck to you.
Well, before, yes, you can have new business also. I am currently the liaison with the Parks and Rec Board. And they asked me to represent them this evening. And also, and Brad pretty much summed it up, I think, what has gone on in parks in the last twenty years is amazing, from out on Bridge Street to the manor back there, to the development of the trees, what's gone on with the Tree Commission, this couple soccer complex. We can just go on and on. So they wanted to extend their appreciation for your time, your hard work. I know a lot of times you're also a liaison for employees, you know, in the department, and you always seem to have your back. So this is just a small token from the Parks and Recreation Board and to thank you and wish you well and just keep your phone off the hook for a while. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there anything additional before we move on to legislation?
Well, I just want to, I want to thank all the members of council for welcoming me, welcoming me into the role earlier this year. You were all very helpful as I learned the job very quickly. I also want to extend special thank you to Mr. Fawson, who is a wealth of information. And if he ever decides he's ready to retire, it's gonna be a very hard council year.
So with that, let's move on to legislation.
If you're ready.
All ready.
Item one.
Second reading of an ordinance to make appropriation for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Chillicothe, State of Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand sixteen, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, and declaring emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Trussell?
And for the last time, I make a motion to waive the three read rule so we can get this passed tonight and pay our people.
Motion is made and seconded by Mrs. Ames. Roll call on the motion to waive the three read rule.
Trussell, yes. Tatman, yes. Paul, yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes. Motion carries. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trussell, yes. Tatman, yes. Paul, yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes. Ames? Yes. That ordinance has passed. Item number two.
First reading of an ordinance approving the action of the Planning Commission of the City of Chillicothe in approving the final plat for the Slate Creek Cove subdivision, block C, land development, accepting the public rights of way and easements granted within said subdivision and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule. Motion is seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on the motion to waive the three read rule.
Trussell, yes. Tatman, yes. Paul? Yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes. Ames? Yes. Motion carries. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trussell, yes. Tatman, yes. Paul? Yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes. And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance amending chapters eleven oh five, eleven seventy-three, and eleven forty-one of the codified ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio. First reading.
And item number four.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, to execute any and all documents in connection with granting a right of way and easement for an electrical lighting upgrade at Mary Lou Patton Park and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Patrick, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three read rule. Seconded by Mrs. Ames. Roll call on the motion to waive the three read rule.
Trussell, yes. Tatman, yes. Paul? Yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes. Ames? Yes. And that ordinance has passed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
If you would, sir.
Motion made by Mr. Trussell. Seconded by Mrs. Ames. Roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Trussell, yes. Tatman, yes. Paul? Yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes. Yes. You're adjourned. Happy New Year.